Most kind of gracious heavenly Father, we thank you this day, Lord, and all the many blessings of life. God, we just pray that you'll be with each and every one as we're here today. God, may we all do that and what we're elected to do for this county and to serve you. God, we just thank and got so much on our hearts and our minds right now, Lord, but I just pray that you'll be with Commissioner Evans as he heals, Lord, and just touch his body in a powerful way. First in Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Jeremiah Lee, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call.
Greg Brooks.
Here.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
Daniel Deal.
Here.
D. S. Knott.
Here.
Mark Evans.
Here.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Here.
John Pipinger.
Here.
Samantha Trantham.
Here.
James Witty.
Here.
First on agenda is approval of meetings of previous meetings.
Motion to approve or unapproved meetings. Thank you.
Got a motion by John, second by Jeremiah, any discussion? Go call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
D. S. Knott.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Witty.
Yes.
Next is approval of four sales. Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by John, second by Samantha, any discussion? Go call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
D. S. Knott.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Witty.
Yes.
Next is approval of notice. We're getting a notice now. I believe we've got two.
Next motion, we approve of two notices.
Second.
Got a motion by James, second by David, any discussion on the notice? Go call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
D. S. Knott.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Witty.
Yes.
Next is budget amendment. Some of y'all were here last month somewhat, and what we done is, how many we got tonight?
Probably about...
Yeah. Instead of, we're on two hour time, man. Instead of reading them all, we'll just, anybody, unless anybody here wants to speak about one in particular, anybody from the audience or newspaper or anybody will give you a copy of it if you've got any questions, and you'll actually be glad we did. Instead of listing all thirty or forty of them.
Motion to approve budget amendments as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by John, a second by David, any discussion? Go call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
D. S. Knott.
Still looking. Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Witty.
Yes.
Next is building grounds committee meeting from previous meeting.
In the last building and grounds committee meeting we had, for those of you present, it was discussed about the doctor's leases for the buildings. Commissioner Pipinger had made the motion for it to be a five-year lease with a CPI index not to exceed forty percent for a hundred-and-twenty day out on both sides. That would be for the leaseee and the lease owners, and for the county executive to be able to sign a waiver for any group that would want to come into any one of the clinics for the doctors. So, our county attorney has drawn that up. The only problem was, or is, is with a five-year lease, there's a lot more with the legalities. He did come up with kind of a way around that that's still legal. It's a four-year and eleven-month lease, and I have the lease agreements here. If anybody wants to read over those, Eric brought those into the office this week. I did receive a payment for, from North Georgia Physical Therapy. That check is in my office, but there was no security deposit. So, I've still held on to that until this commission either approves or disapproves of the lease agreement with the terms that come forth from the committee and how they were presented to you. And if you approve that, then I have the resolution, and then we'll move forward and get these to the doctors' offices and see if we can continue on doing business or move forward.
Shall I take those and read them?
I only have these copies. I don't have a, I can get more copies. If you didn't want to postpone it, and I can get some copies here in just a minute, and that way everybody can read them, but it's the same, everything's the same with the addition to a five-year or a four-year, eleven-month lease agreement.
It's the same form we passed last time, but the only change is the length of the lease.
I mean, if you didn't want to postpone it, and it's been postponed for two years, I know you need to keep postponing.
Anybody want to make a motion to approve new leases as written?
I make a motion to approve new leases as written.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Dave, a second by John.
Wait, I need to pull that second.
Somebody else make a second?
I'll second motion.
Got a motion by Dave, a second by James, any more discussion? Go call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
D. S. Knott.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Witty.
Yes.
The resolution that goes with it is Resolution six dash one dash nineteen, Resolution approving commercial lease agreement for units of Medical Park at Copper Basin Medical Center between Polk County, Tennessee and City of Duck Town, Tennessee, the landlords, and North Georgia Physical Therapy Associates Incorporated, tenant number two, oh, number two in the Resolution approving the commercial lease agreement for Unit B of the Medical Park at Copper Basin Medical Center between Polk County, Tennessee and City of Duck Town, Tennessee. And does it spell that? Come on, maybe? Okay. Dr. Siddiqui, Family Clinic, tenant number three, authorizing the county executive to execute the lease agreements on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee, and authorizing the county executive to execute and provide the above-named tenants with written consent or approval on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee on matters set out in the commercial lease agreements that require written consent or approval from Polk County, Tennessee. Whereas, North Georgia Physical Therapy Associates Incorporated currently occupies Unit A of the Medical Park at Copper Basin Medical Center and desires to enter into a new commercial lease agreement for Unit A. Whereas, Dr. Siddiqui, Family Clinic currently occupies Unit B of the Medical Park at Copper Basin Medical Center and desires to enter into a new commercial lease agreement for Unit B. Whereas, Polk County, Tennessee desires to enter into the new lease agreements with North Georgia Physical Therapy Associates Incorporated and Dr. Siddiqui, Family Clinic, subject to the terms and conditions set out in the lease agreements and also subject to approval by the City of Duck Town, Tennessee. Now therefore, be resolved by this legislative body in session assembled. That commercial lease agreement with North Georgia Physical Therapy Associates for Unit A of the Medical Park at Copper Basin Medical Center is approved. Commercial lease agreement with Dr. Siddiqui, Family Clinic for Unit B of the Medical Park at Copper Basin Medical Center. Medical Center is approved. Upon approval by City of Duck Town, Tennessee, the county executive is authorized to execute commercial lease agreements on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee, and the county executive is authorized to execute and provide the above-named tenants with written consent or approval on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee on matters set out in commercial lease agreements that require written consent or approval from Polk County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved as this resolution take effect from and after its passage, public welfare requirement this twentieth day of June twenty nineteen.
Do you want to make a motion to approve the resolution?
I make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Dave, a second by, Jeremy, any more discussion?
Six oh one nineteen, right?
Yep.
Any more discussion?
Go call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
D. S. Knott.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Witty.
Yes.
Next is building grounds committee meeting from previous meeting.
In the last building and grounds committee meeting we had, for those of you present, it was discussed about the doctor's leases for the buildings. Commissioner Pipinger had made the motion for it to be a five-year lease with a CPI index not to exceed forty percent for a hundred-and-twenty day out on both sides. That would be for the leaseee and the lease owners, and for the county executive to be able to sign a waiver for any group that would want to come into any one of the clinics for the doctors. So, our county attorney has drawn that up. The only problem was, or is, is with a five-year lease, there's a lot more with the legalities. He did come up with kind of a way around that that's still legal. It's a four-year and eleven-month lease, and I have the lease agreements here. If anybody wants to read over those, Eric brought those into the office this week. I did receive a payment for, from North Georgia Physical Therapy. That check is in my office, but there was no security deposit. So, I've still held on to that until this commission either approves or disapproves of the lease agreement with the terms that come forth from the committee and how they were presented to you. And if you approve that, then I have the resolution, and then we'll move forward and get these to the doctors' offices and see if we can continue on doing business or move forward.
Shall I take those and read them?
I only have these copies. I don't have a, I can get more copies. If you didn't want to postpone it, and I can get some copies here in just a minute, and that way everybody can read them, but it's the same, everything's the same with the addition to a five-year or a four-year, eleven-month lease agreement.
It's the same form we passed last time, but the only change is the length of the lease.
I mean, if you didn't want to postpone it, and it's been postponed for two years, I know you need to keep postponing.
Anybody want to make a motion to approve new leases as written?
I make a motion to approve new leases as written.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Dave, a second by John.
Wait, I need to pull that second.
Somebody else make a second?
I'll second motion.
Got a motion by Dave, a second by James, any more discussion? Go call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
D. S. Knott.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Witty.
Yes.
The resolution that goes with it is Resolution six dash one dash nineteen, Resolution approving commercial lease agreement for units of Medical Park at Copper Basin Medical Center between Polk County, Tennessee and City of Duck Town, Tennessee, the landlords, and North Georgia Physical Therapy Associates Incorporated, tenant number two, oh, number two in the Resolution approving the commercial lease agreement for Unit B of the Medical Park at Copper Basin Medical Center between Polk County, Tennessee and City of Duck Town, Tennessee. And does it spell that? Come on, maybe? Okay. Dr. Siddiqui, Family Clinic, tenant number three, authorizing the county executive to execute the lease agreements on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee, and authorizing the county executive to execute and provide the above-named tenants with written consent or approval on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee on matters set out in the commercial lease agreements that require written consent or approval from Polk County, Tennessee. Whereas, North Georgia Physical Therapy Associates Incorporated currently occupies Unit A of the Medical Park at Copper Basin Medical Center and desires to enter into a new commercial lease agreement for Unit A. Whereas, Dr. Siddiqui, Family Clinic currently occupies Unit B of the Medical Park at Copper Basin Medical Center between Polk County, Tennessee and City of Duck Town, Tennessee. And does it spell that? Come on, maybe? Okay. And Dr. Siddiqui, Family Clinic, tenant number three, authorizing the county executive to execute the lease agreements on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee, and authorizing the county executive to execute and provide the above-named tenants with written consent or approval on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee on matters set out in the commercial lease agreements that require written consent or approval from Polk County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved as this resolution take effect from and after its passage, public welfare requirement this twentieth day of June twenty nineteen.
Do you need to make a motion to approve the resolution?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve it. Motion by Dave, a second by, Jeremy, any more discussion?
Six oh one nineteen, right?
Yep.
Any more discussion?
Go call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
D. S. Knott.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trantham.
Yes.
James Witty.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Next is defense bid for the road department. I think we agreed at the committee meeting to visit that after the budget said, is it still good?
You want to table it on this time?
Yeah. It was all in agreement to see if we had any money after we got the budget paid.
You want to table it and resubmit by June later, that way you will...
We'll put it on the agenda, actually, the first meeting after the budget's passed.
Okay.
Next is lodge tax private act change, Commissioner Pipinger.
Y'all have in front of you, and I passed the newest version out tonight, so the one I passed out tonight will replace the one that's in your package. In a nutshell, goes from three percent lodging tax to five percent, additional two percent, one percent of which would be designated for sanitation. One-third of one-fifth would be designated Parks and Recreation, one-third of one-fifth to a entity specified in the change to promote the county, and that's done by this board at the time. And then, one-third of one-fifth would go to the public libraries. Now, I know that's kind of some odd math, but that's the way the original was written, so it had to be addressed that way. The thing about it, right now, the current one percent on the lodging tax is producing somewhere around twenty-nine thousand a year. We get fifty-eight thousand to Chamber of Commerce this fiscal year, and they get, they were getting two-thirds, which would now be two-fifths, same money.
So, it's basically increased revenue by about sixty thousand in county, fifty-eight thousand total.
Somewhere around fifty-eight thousand two hundred total, but it is designated. Now, one of the designations, twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand, one percent of this increase would go to our sanitation, which we know we're fixing to have to deal with. The rest goes to Parks and Rec split both ways for general maintenance, probably be about seven, eight thousand a year, seven or eight thousand a year more to the library, and somewhere around, well, seventy-five hundred to any group or organization or entity that we select to promote the county, is the way the proration is. It does address the original private act, and there's two copies of the original. Commissioner Trantham and Commissioner S. Knott both have a copy. I handed out earlier. Now, one thing to note, the one-third of the one-fifth to the libraries, that is above and beyond, and will not affect our current maintenance effort that we're giving to them. So, we can't substitute that money in lieu of what we're giving through budget. It's on top of what we're already giving. Mr. Chairman, if you agree that resolution...
You hand them out.
Yep. I believe I've got another copy right here.
I think I just got... Hold it up there.
Did you find two pages?
Yeah. No? Yeah, it is. It's going to be Resolution six dash oh-two dash nineteen. Resolution request amendment to chapter number fifty-two, House Bill number twenty-three ninety-nine, by Representative Newton, substitute for Senate Bill number twenty-three eighty-four by Senator Miller, of the Private Acts two thousand five of Tennessee. Whereas, the governing body of Polk County, Tennessee, has reviewed growth and need assessments through the twenty-seventeen, eighteen budgeting process, and whereas the legislative body of Polk County understands that it wishes to change the direction of funding practices set forth in chapter number fifty-two, House Bill number twenty-three ninety-nine, Senate Bill number twenty-three eighty-four of the Tennessee Private Acts two thousand five. Now therefore, be resolved by the Polk County Commission meeting in regular session this twentieth day of June twenty nineteen at the Copper Basin Community Center in Duck Town, Tennessee. The Polk County Legislative Body hereby makes request of the Tennessee House and Senate for the following changes to be made effect. Article one, section one, J, be added as follows. J, Parks and Recreation means the public parks and recreation locations where such property is designated...
Do what? Please see outside.
Means the public parks and recreation locations where such property is designated under the Polk County Parks and Recreation Board and/or Polk County Legislative Body. Article two, that section one, K, be added and read as follows. K, Library, means Polk County Public Library is served through the Polk County budgeting process. Article three, that section one, I, be added...
L.
L, be added and read as follows. L, Promotion Designee means employees, firms, or other entities set for the Polk County Legislative Body to promote the county of Polk and work with other interests to highlight the county as an economic opportunity for betterment of all businesses and locations in the county. Article four, that section two, which reads three percent, be changed to read five percent. Article five, section three, A, be changed to one-fifth. Article six, that section three, B, be changed to read two-fifths. Article seven, that section three, C, D, E, and F, be added as follows, an equal total of two percent combined. C, the county shall provide one-third or one-fifth of the tax of the Polk County Library budget above the current maintenance of every, and any other considerations already budgeted for Polk County libraries with such addition not affecting local maintenance of every. D, the county shall provide one-third or one-fifth of the tax of the county Parks and Recreation budget. E, the county shall provide one-third or one-fifth of the tax revenues to be set in the county budget process to create, maintain, and maintain a promotion designee system determined in Article three, section I. L, for the purposes of promoting tourism, furthering eating out of development and providing funding for such achievements. The county shall designate one-fifth of lodging tax to the public sanitation expense. Article nine, that section three, read as follows. The act shall be made effective on the first day of July twenty fifteen to coincide with the first date of fiscal year. Should I say twenty nineteen?
Nope.
All reservations taken prior, the effective date of this act shall be deemed exempt from said taxation. Any reservations taken after the effective date of July first, two thousand five, or any period thereafter, shall be subject to such taxation. The act shall be made effective on the first...
You missed that middle part there, Brooks. Be replaced with, see directly under that.
That's why I thought two thousand five wasn't that, that's my bad. Be replaced with, the act shall be made effective on the first day of July twenty twenty to coincide with the first date of fiscal year. Any reservations taken after the effective date of this act for July first, two thousand twenty, or any period thereafter, shall be subject to such taxation. This resolution shall become effective on pages of public welfare requirement.
Motion to approve Resolution six two nineteen.
Second.
Got a motion by John, a second by David, any discussion?
Yeah, there's one thing we do agree on, and we brought this up earlier in the year that the lodging tax be raised to five percent, and at that time, the way the original private act read, that two-thirds would go to the Chamber of Commerce, which does advertise the county, and not only as business-wise, but also in tourism. They've done a great job since two thousand five, when they got this private act passed. They got two-thirds of that five percent was the proposal then, and the county still got their one-third of that five percent. Now, what the county done with theirs, that's up to, up to them. It went to...
Debt service.
Debt service. Everything that I can understand, that this private act is for tourism, and it doesn't pertain to the things that are outlined here in J and K and I or L, they're not anything, don't have anything to do with tourism.
So, Parks and Rec, having good Parks and Rec in your county doesn't have anything to do with tourism?
When has it?
Well, we've had...
If you want to look, look back.
Well, we, we've had playoffs and stuff here in the county at our fields, and it's brought pretty good money in Benton City and places like that. We've had long discussions on that, sitting right here with Mark Bishop before.
Yeah, well, we...
What about sanitation? Sanitation ain't got anything to do with tourism?
We've got sanitation involved in the money that we get from the rafters or the outfitters. If you remember that there was, it's part of the agreement, you had foreign rescue, you had sanitation, all that might come out of that.
But you're saying sanitation doesn't have anything to do with recreation or tourism?
How does it promote tourism?
Well, it helps us pay the effects of tourism in county. And there's one-third here, if you'll go back and read, Commissioner Woody, that specifically, one-third of one-fifth, back up on I, let's see, Parks and Rec being added, section one, L, be added, to read as follows. Promotion Designee means employees, firm, or other entities set by the Polk County Legislative Body to promote the county of Polk and work with other interests to highlight the county as an economic opportunity for betterment of all business and locations in the county.
So, we've got somebody, we've got a chamber director that does the very things that you've outlined there.
Okay, and what, you, one of the ones that were kind of irritated that, what was it, Tennessee Overhill didn't get any of the money, even though the chamber did at the time? Just a little while back, you, you were, seemed to be a little irritated that Tennessee Overhill didn't get their money this year, but the chamber got their money.
The chambers got their money under the private act. It was a donation to the Overhill that the county agreed to pay back whenever that was set up as a three-county deal, and they really need it.
Well, it wasn't the first time we cut them out, either.
Well, the problem is too, I don't know, we're so short on money this year, that every dime that we get, we're going to have to divvle it between more people, the way I'm seeing it. I mean, I would be far giving the chamber a whole bunch of money if we had it to give to them, but everybody's wanting something, and we're still three, four hundred thousand dollars in the hole.
And we're giving the chamber more than was ever anticipated. I mean, we're talking about close to sixty thousand this year that we were giving the chamber. How much are the dues for the chamber? Anybody?
The county commission is not giving the chamber anything. That was a private act that was passed.
It was a private act that was passed by the county legislative body.
You're not just giving them money that there is...
We didn't have to designate that money to them.
Huh?
We didn't have to designate that money to them.
Somebody did back here in two thousand five.
I was on here, and I remember how it come about.
It was done then, so now then you want to come along later and start saying, well, we don't need to do that, and we want to take the money away from them.
You do understand that the money to the chamber in this, this resolution is exactly the same amount that they're giving her.
I understand that.
So, we're not taking any of it.
But you're going ahead with other things that doesn't necessarily go with that. You remember in two thousand twelve, you tried to do the same thing, and you had the votes in, but did it get passed? Read those back out, if you can.
Read them back out?
Yes, ma'am. I think I miscounted on that two-thirds.
You got five yes and two no's?
Five yes and two no. I miscounted on that two-thirds, they didn't pass, Greg.
Two-thirds what's here tonight?
Nope, two-thirds of the commission.
We'll put it back on our next one. Is that John Hawke?
That's good.
Yeah, private act, make no way out of majority, it's worth two-thirds. Number of members, it would take six votes, so we'll do it again next month. Is that John Hawke?
That's good, ma'am.
Is June Griffin here tonight?
She said she couldn't be here. Yeah, I don't believe she's here tonight. She has to be put back on there for next month.
Oh, what was hers, the vote? What kind of table? What was it for?
Uh, well, she was kinda wanting to give everybody a pat on the back for the gun resolution.
Oh, she's gonna want to give us a certificate or whatever?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think she's wanting to, she requested to be on the agenda next month, so.
Well, I was approached during the month too, before last week, some guy in our A's wanted to do something similar. If we could get him lined up, her to do the same meeting, that'd be good, just get them both the same night. I didn't know what hers was, so. Next is Road Department Resolution.
This is the resolution, in fact, we've been doing the, several years ago, did everything together for trying to lease some equipment that was very well needed for the road department, and went through, and state finance declined as the lease was presented, and they had presented this as being a solution to the problem, and went through several stages to get to this point today. The money would actually come through local government, which has the least amount of interest rate than any other lender to get those pieces of equipment. And the resolution to be done is, has to be approved from the county legislative body, and then we present this back to state finance for their approval. And we've met all the qualifications to do so, and we're here tonight for this resolution to be signed and presented to the state.
Can you read that, quick time? I got your reading back, I'm struggling with that one.
Resolution, Public County, Tennessee, authorizing the issue assurance of interest-bearing highway department capital highway note series twenty nineteen in the amount to not exceed seven hundred thousand and provide for the payment of said notes. Whereas the board of commissions, Public County, Tennessee, has determined that it is necessary to prescribe and authorize issue sale and provide for the payments of this interest-bearing capital highway note to finance certain public works projects, consisting financing the acquisition equipment for the highway department of the county, including three dump trucks, four tractors, wood mowers, and acquisition of all other property, real and personal, proven therefore thereto and connected to such work, and pay all legal, fiscal, administrative, and engineering cost in incident thereto collective to the project. Whereas the county estimates that the economic life of such project exceeds five years. Whereas the county claims determines this project will promote and provide a traditional governmental activity and otherwise fulfill a public purpose. Whereas, whereas in order to proceed in extrications, potentially as possible with such and censured project, it is necessary that interest-bearing capital highway notes be issued for the purpose of providing funds to the finance of the project, and whereas the county is authorized by the provisions of Title IX, Chapter twenty-one, Tennessee public pay to amend and issue such notes for said purpose upon the approval of the Director of Office of State and Local Finance, the Director of State and Local Finance. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissions of Public County, Tennessee, as part of section one of Florida notes herein authorized shall be issued pursuant to Title IX, Chapter twenty-one, Tennessee public pay as amended and other applicable provisions of law. Section two, authorization for the purpose of providing funds to finance cost of the project there shall be issued pursuant to and in accordance with the provisions of Title IX, Chapter twenty-one, TCA. As amended and for other applicable provisions of law, an interest-bearing capital highway note to the county in aggregate principal amount of not to exceed seven hundred thousand and such censured amounts as may be determined by the county executive of the county or the county executive. At the time of sale collective and notes individually, section three terms of note, the note shall be designated highway department capital highway series twenty nineteen. Note shall be issued in registered form without coupons. Note shall be numbered from one upwards, shall be dated to date of issue and delivery or such other date as county executive shall determine, shall be sold at not less than a quarter amount thereof, and shall bear interest rate not to exceed three point seven three percent annually. Such interest being payable at such times as agreed upon with purchaser of such notes, but in not event less than semi-annual each year commencing six months from the dated date or such date as shall designated by the county executive, the interest payment date, and shall mature not later than the end of the fifth fiscal year following the fiscal year in which the notes are issued. Each year the notes shall outstanding, shall, each year the notes are outstanding, the county shall retire principal on the notes in the amount of is estimated to be at least equal to the authorization which reflects level debt service to the notes. The note shall contain such terms, conditions, and provisions other than the expressly provided or limited hereinness as may be agreed upon by the county executive of the county in purchase of the notes. The interest of the notes shall be payable by wire transfer or by check or other form of draft of the note registered. As such term herein defined, deposited by the note registrar in the United States mail, first-class postage prepared in sealed envelopes addressed to the owner of such notes, as in the applicable interest payment date and their respective addresses as shown in the registration books of the county maintained by the note registrar as a close of business fifteen calendar days preceding the next interest payment date. All payments of the principal and of the interest of the notes shall be made in a coin or currency of the United States of America, which on the day of payment thereof shall be legal tender for payment of the public and private. Section four. The note shall not be subject to redemption in public or in part prior to maturity provided, however, at the option of the county upon thirty calendar days written notice to the registered owner and with the consistent of registered owner, the county paid prepaid the notes in full at price or plus a one percent premium and accrued interest and the date of redemption notwithstanding, and above, the county may make additional principal payments to the note on fifteen calendar days within written notice of the registered owner. Section five. The note shall be executed in the name of the county, shall bear the mature signature of the county executive, shall be the countersigned by the county clerk of the county with his or her manual signature, and shall have printed imprint there in the official seal of the county. In the event, any officer whose signature appears on the note shall cease to such officer, such signature shall nevertheless be valid and sufficient for all purpose. The note shall be issued in type print or photocopy form or any combination thereof subsequently in the form attached heretofore as exhibited. With such minor changes therein and such variances thereof, the county executive may, deemed necessary or desirable, the blanks appropriately completed by the county executive prior to issuing the notes. I'm just gonna say, this is coming out of our money, and it's not gonna be coming out of county's money to pay these payments, and it's missing the county executive's something, because he is a financial officer of the county. So it has to go through his office, and the clerk has to conduct the business, as far as that goes, but it's coming out of our money.
We don't have time to read all of these.
I'll tell you it's long.
I mean, what do you think, Greg? Is it necessary?
Don't ask me, you know my answer on that.
We gotta read them all?
The legal department, the commission did, voted a long time ago, read all resolutions affecting any money or any dollar budget amendments.
I didn't know if he might just give a mountain of terms and conditions.
Twenty-five sections, we keep moving on page two.
I've got one, has the county attorney looked at this document?
Doesn't have to, state finance.
Look, state finance.
The other way with the way it was going through lease agreement, that he was having to do an opinion on the lease agreements, but the county finance did an opinion on it, and they said it would not, it would not be appropriate to do a lease, and the county at the time could not hold them. And that's all, again, those are just minor things that are corrective, and everything's good, as far as that, and we've done our open forum. We've done everything that qualifies us to go to this local pool, which is from the state of Tennessee, to borrow this time.
Okay, does he gotta keep reading or what?
Which chairman, do you entertain a motion?
Yeah.
I make the motion, we accept Resolution nineteen six twenty from the Road Department as presented. With a copy here available for anybody that wants to look over it. And authorize the county executive also to enter into any and all agreements still with this document, as may be necessary.
Second. Got a motion with John, second by you or David? Oh, let me say it first.
David.
David.
Fine.
Ladies first.
Anybody need a copy? I'll have a scan of it, if anybody want one.
Is there any more discussion?
So this is all coming from yours, even if, you know, you can't pay it, it still comes out of yours?
That's all, we've got the setup for paying, that's all coming from the road.
So it'd never come out of county money?
If something happened to their payment plan, if something went defunct, I'm assuming y'all are anticipating fuel tax as part of your revenue on this?
It's based on fund balance.
Okay.
It's based on a lot of factors there, it's not just based on, you know, we could buy, you know, one piece of equipment every year and keep, you know, just like that, and we could still not recoup the effect of having all the equipment at one time. So the payment's the same over a five-year period, if I bought a piece of equipment every year, it's no different, you know?
But, but you've anticipated your revenues.
Yeah.
Unless something happens for that anticipation, and the money's not there, it'll all be on him. Now, there is a chance, if I'm reading the end of that right, if he was to not be able to make that payment, the county would have to stand good for it.
That's the reason why the county has to approve.
It has to approve.
It puts, you just can't help it, it puts you right on the commission, there's no way around it. And y'all approve my budget, y'all approve, there's just, there's just no way around, y'all not approving our finances.
We would ultimately stand good, but we should never see that payment come for us.
Correct. I got one more question, not saying you're not gonna win just so you hit the lottery, when you were saying, nothing but a road man or whatever. Is a new road man obligated to, this budget's been here, the department is?
Yeah, obligated, because they would have.
That's just a tip, I'm not thinking.
So you're gonna have the equipment, you're not taking it with you?
No, I'm not taking it with me.
But what, you're like, if the road man says, well, I'm the road man now, and I don't own this, and I don't want my money going anywhere.
He incurs the debt of the previous road man, in a nutshell. The department is liable.
But I will, I will do my best not to leave another man in bed. This is something that would benefit, the department benefit the county. We've, you know, we've had a lot of, you know, repairs on older trucks and-
And that's a just a what-if question, just because it can't, is all it was.
Yeah. No, the way I'm looking at it, it's gonna benefit us because we're gonna have new equipment that has warranties, and we're gonna have to pay the, you know, the upkeep that's so high, trying to keep, you know, some of these other equipment.
What's your warranty on these?
Five years.
Five years.
I requested five years of warranty of the note.
So it's a time warranty?
Five years, and the tractors have a six-year.
So errors of mileage doesn't count on that?
It's strictly time. Sorry.
Errors of mileage does not count toward that, it's strictly time, set by time.
It will have a mileage and hour, you know, part of that, but it's basically, tractors is six years, and the trucks are a five-year engine and frame and after treatment. And everything, the tractors are, they have this regen system on anything, it's eighty-five horsepower, it has a regen system, and that's, that's the only thing I hate about the newer tractors and stuff, but you can't get away from that. You have to have a warranty on that to cover any new equipment now. You better have a warranty.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Debbie Asman?
Yes.
Jeremy Kimzy?
Yes.
Don Pippenjor?
Yes.
Samantha Trantham?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
Next is show barn bids, county executive.
The show barn bids that were in your packets, that was the only bid that was turned in, or the structure of the show barns. It's about twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-five thousand dollars in bulk, in the grain. With it being the only one bid turned in, I would ask that you as a commission, give us the chance, Greg Paxton and myself, to rewrite this, send it back out. There were two people that came into the office and picked up a packet, but they done saw on about the eighth day before that bid was opened up, and they were not able to turn a bid back in. So I think it would be a little more competitive if they would have had some time to do that.
Motion to decline the bid. Motion to decline the bid.
Second.
Got a motion by John, second by Samantha, decline, decline the one bid, any discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenau?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Witty?
Yes.
So we need to give him permission to take these bids, can he just do it?
He pretty much has that automatically, it's open projects, so that's not an issue.
Right next is Tennessee Department of Revenue request from Commissioner Pippin.
Yeah, Mr. Brooks, would you read that? I'll give a nutshell on it, it's asking the Tennessee Department of Revenue to look at the businesses here in the county and make sure we're getting paid all the sales taxes that we think we should be getting paid. We've had several people mention that the percentage on hotel motel taxes and that couldn't, couldn't stand to be right. One of them has five cabins, and she said hers is projecting ten percent of what we brought in this year, which if that's true, it's true, that can't be. They wouldn't make that much money, so we have to have some people not pay. So it's just a request asking them to look into it.
Resolution six dash four, six dash four dash nineteen, resolution of governing body of Polk County, Tennessee, requesting inquiry on revenue collections paid, whereas governing body of Polk County, Tennessee, sees the need to make inquiry for the state department revenue on business tax collections in the county of Polk, whereas legislative body of Polk County is aware that there may be multi-activity businesses that may not be rendering payment from part of their activities, and that there needs to be an understanding on which parts may be exempt from taxation, and whereas it is not clear as the amount of revenue being collected by, or if all lodging entities are paying the county lodging tax, including Airbnb's and other in said county. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Polk County Commission meeting in regular session at Carps Basin Community Center in Ducktown, Tennessee, this twentieth day of June twenty nineteen, that the Polk County Legislative Body is requesting State Department of Revenue to make inquiry into taxation and middle of entities operating in Polk County and relay the information back to the county of Polk. This includes all business entities, lodging entities, and recreational entities in this county. This resolution shall become effective on passage of public welfare requirements. As far as Airbnb's, I think we're all in agreement, we need collecting, we ain't waiting on the state to change the law or something on those before we knew anything.
Last I heard, they were looking into it, and part of this deals with the lodging, it's not part of the lodging tax, it's part of the regular use tax that is collected. There's been some questions on entities that may be exempt on part of their activities, but not on the other part, not paying. I don't know if you've got any mail outs or emails, there's several people asking about this, and the Department of Revenue said that they would have told them that they would start a review upon request, so that's what this is for.
I'd like most to approve the resolution.
What number is it? What number is that?
Six, or six-four, six-five.
Well, county and road departments, six-five nineteen.
Now, the road department's under a different, y'all are under, what was your amendment number?
Eight.
Six, nineteen-six something.
Nineteen-six-twenty is what.
Nineteen-six-twenty's the road department, they're on the separate.
So it's six-four nineteen.
Yep.
Got a motion by Dewey, you second by James, any discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenau?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Witty?
Yes.
Next is grant rider contract, Commissioner Davis.
Okay, Robbie, you had a resolution rolled up for this contract, which has been approved by you and the county attorney, correct?
The county attorney and myself, we did, we read over the, the contract with J.K. Harrell. I know that some of the different commissioners had asked questions, I checked the Southeast Development District to see if there was a contract that we have with them, first of all, there is not. So they just asked that we would always remember that they do a lot of our grants, and that they do write those grants and try to go after them for us. Their percentage rate may be cheaper than what J.K.'s is. J.K. may be looking to do something else outside of what Southeast would do, or vice versa, but there is nothing that would or would not contractually keep us with either or one. The only thing in there that Eric and myself seen that kinda did wave a flag was, is that if, if Mr. Harrell had started a process for a grant, and then his services was discontinued, that he was to be paid if he had worked towards achieving one. That was the only thing that Eric seen, from what I know and talk with J.K., I don't think that would be a problem. I don't think that he would ever do something outside of the wishes of the county. First off, though, he says that he would rather it be like the way that he would like for it to be, is to come to myself first. If he brings something to me, it's like Greg said earlier about a, just something stupid, like a waterfall on top of the courthouse, I'm gonna tell him no, and he's gonna go right on it. But it would always come to me first, then we would bring it to this body, and if this body thinks that it's a good idea to keep going, then it would always be up to this body, but the first head would be me. And so if it's something other that is just nowhere near feasible or nowhere near attainable, we would, we would take that away.
Right.
But what Commissioner Davis is talking about is there is a resolution, if you all want to move forward with that, if you agree on this resolution, then I will sign the contract with Mr. Harrell. I cannot do that unless I have the approval of the body with anything. I have to have that resolution for it to be legal, so, but I do have a resolution, if you all want to move forward with that, then I will sign that contract, and we will be in the grant contract. It is at no cost to this county if he does not get anything.
This is, you know, this will be something that will strictly, and like Robbie just brought up, if Southeast is working, if something has come up, Mr. Harrell finds this, also out there, he goes to Robbie, Robbie says, hey, we don't need you, they're already on it. He's gonna shove it under the table, it's gonna end right then and now. He's not, he is not after this, he's truly not after it for the buck. He, he just, he loves doing this kind of work, he's very good at it, he has got a lot of connections and a lot of higher places, and he's just been a very old friend of ours, and when I got on this commission, it just, we just got started talking, he served on a lot of things in Monroe County, still is on something up there, but he, he said, it's just something about, he said, you people, he knows where it need, and so that's, that's a lot of what it's based on. He, he will be coming from no click, which will be a good thing. I'm normally not a favor of anybody coming in outside of Polk County, I'm kinda like for us to keep it with us, but after I got started thinking about it, I thought, no, this is a good thing, because he's not connected to any certain entity. So he's gonna be out there looking for anything and everything.
Has he got several grants before?
Do what?
Has he got several grants before, brother?
Yeah, 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 he's, he's been very successful, but now, it's like I said, we may not get a dime, you know, he may not help us one red dime, but he won't cost us one red dime if it don't, so, you know. All that being said, I mean, you know, it's, I, I just, you know, if anybody's got any questions that I can answer, you know, about him or anything, I'd be more than happy to. He, he wanted to come tonight, but I, I told him, I said, I, something might happen and we might even have to table it, and he had a long way to come, so, you know, I told him that I didn't feel like it was necessary. But anyway, but that's, you know, that's, that's where he's at, and I mean, it's just, he's just gonna be out there looking and digging and searching, and, you know, it's just like this one grant that got approved through, I think Volunteer Electric, where a lot of broadband went into place, but Polk County didn't get it. Well, guess why? Because we ain't got enough votes here for people to care, our representatives. So, and we didn't have anybody out there fighting for that grant, because it, we didn't even, I mean, it kinda was swept under the rug. So J.K. already approached about that. He said, we, Polk County, they did it a whole lot worse than what McMinn County needed, and you gave it to McMinn, but he said, oh, but let me guess, it's a lot more votes. So that's the kind of stuff that's taking place that we don't have a clue that's going on. I'm just telling you, my eyes have got wide open.
And if they consider a private contract as far as any liability?
Yeah.
Like if he was out there doing something for Polk County and got run over costs to beat him up?
Exactly right.
We wouldn't have no liability.
No, no mileage, no nothing, I mean, it will strictly be, and, and like, you know, and, and I told him, you know, I said, you know, there's a lot of grants that, you know, we gotta do matching fund. I said, I have time, we're not gonna have fifteen cents to match him with. So, you know, that's why I said, go to Robbie first, let's have him overlook it, see what, and, and then it goes forward, you know, so, you know, he will not be his bomb boss, you know, Robbie, and then this commission will be his boss. So, anyway, but all that being said and done, if we can open up a vote on it, Greg, or whatever we need to do, I think.
Anybody might motion on this resolution?
Does Southeast Development come before you with any grants they're gonna do?
I haven't any contact with Southeast Development, and that's another thing that I haven't. It's not that.
I just wanna know, are they both gonna be possibly working on the same grant? Southeast Development had started on it without telling you, and then him come and ask you about it, and you say okay?
No, anything that goes on, I, I would know either row or whichever one of them. And it may be that they're both going for it, one of them may be a cheaper percentage, so it's just something, you know, whenever that comes through, but they would, if they both come to me the same thing, and I would make the decision as far as which way to go and of course, it ultimately relies on this commission.
Wouldn't Southeast Development help with any funding that we might need?
They can help us as well.
That'd be a plus for them.
Mm-hmm.
Have you got a copy of the resolution down there?
Yes, Chairman Brooks has that resolution on board.
Okay, well, we need, go ahead and read that, Greg.
Yeah. Resolution six dash five dash nineteen, resolution retaining the services of James K. Harrell, Harrell or Harrell?
It's Harrell.
Harrell.
Yeah.
DBA Harrell Group as a grant rider and seller. Number two, approving the grant service agreement between Polk County, Tennessee, and James K. Harrell doing business as the Harrell Group. And number three, authorizing the county executive to execute the agreement on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee. Whereas James K. Harrell doing business as the Harrell Group is offered to be a grant rider and seller for Polk County, Tennessee, and presented to county with the grant services agreed. Whereas Polk County desires to retain James K. Harrell doing business as the Harrell Group as a grant rider and seller to Polk County, Tennessee. Now therefore, be it resolved, this legislative body, and session simple. One, James K. Harrell doing business as the Harrell Group is retained as a grant rider and seller. Number two, the grant services agreement between Polk County, Tennessee, and James K. Harrell doing business as Harrell Group is approved, and county executives authorized execute the agreement on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee. Bit further resolved, this resolution take effect, from and after its passage to public welfare requirement this twentieth day of June twenty nineteen.
What's resolution number six, five?
Six-five nineteen.
Motion to pass resolution six-five nineteen.
Second, that. Got a motion by John, second by Jeremy, any discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenau?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Witty?
Yes.
Next, I think it's right. Next, we got a library board appointment, a reappointment ready, Bill Miller, I think he's currently on the board now, is that right?
He's chairman.
Motion to reappoint Bill Miller to the board, library board.
It ain't Bill Miller.
What'd you say?
This is from him.
Oh, it's from Bill.
Chairman of the Polk County Library Board.
He's not one going back on.
No, it's Sharon Luke.
No, it's not his position, but who's he gonna mean?
Sharon Luke and Laura Crawford.
Two that are expiring.
I thought said Bill Miller wouldn't be the chairperson of the board.
I'll make a motion, we approve their recommendation.
Second.
Got a motion by James, second by Davis, to approve Mr. Miller's recommendations, any discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenau?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Witty?
Yes.
Next is a referendum on local option sales tax on new school construction. I think you wanna say just a little bit about this tonight?
Yeah, I'm gonna mention this real quick, I am pulling this from the agenda tonight, this is a resolution in its entirety that would produce about three hundred and forty thousand outside the incorporated city limits of the county, plus the capture on the part inside the cities. This, the way it's written, is designed to be used for new school construction and renovation above general maintenance. If we pass the resolution, it would go on the referendum for the people to vote on for the state primary county general on August sixth of two thousand, twenty twenty. Before I present this to the board, I'm leaving it to the school to do a, a separate resolution that they will accept the money if this passes for that sole purpose.
New school construction?
New school construction and renovation above and beyond general maintenance.
Well, do they need to pass that resolution, or can that just be defined on the ballot?
Nope, they have to pass it, and there also is a legal question in it to the Department of Revenue and the Comptroller's Office. I'm waiting on the, the response from them, it is a written question that's been sent to them as the, the exact placement on the ballot. But if the school board passes such resolution for that intent, I do plan on putting this back on the agenda for us to vote. I don't think it'd do any good to present it if it's not for a specific purpose. It might pass here, but I don't think it'll pass at the ballot. That's all I have on that.
Yes, Chairman. Is that it? Say, Donald?
Yes, sir.
Next is one I've got on here, it's our rules enforcement in our convenience centers, we've had a whole lot of problems, of course, we always get abuse, and when we do, we've got to figure out, we keep talking about this, we never act on, who's responsible for enforcing, what the fines are. I think Robbie got hit over the head by garbage up down the other day for telling some guy from Road County to leave. I mean, we've got to do something, I mean, he didn't really do that, he just told the guy to leave. The lady out Uh, next is, uh, one I've got on here, it's our, uh, rules enforcement in our convenience centers. Uh, we've had a whole lot of problems, of course, we always get abused. And when we do, we, we've got to figure out, we keep talking about this, we never act on who's responsible for enforcing, uh, what the fines are. I think Robbie got hit over the head by garbage up down the other day for telling some guy from Row County to leave. I mean, we've got to, to do something, I mean, he didn't really do that, he just told the guy to leave. The lady out Benton had a guy come in from, uh, McMinn Monroe County one, and she said, "You can't dump here." And he said, "You can't stop me," and he just throwed it in her legs. I mean, we've got to start making example out of these people. We're not the world's dumping grounds, and until we do something and make example out of somebody, uh, but, is it through the leader grant? Does the sheriff's office have authority to write tickets?
Yeah, it would have to be the sheriff department because-
I think Steve Lawte can do.
Lawt- Mr. Lawte may be able to, we just have to see from the legal standpoint of that. But nobody else can, and I know, and I'm not gonna point fingers, but there's been a lot of people in here when I make this statement, you're gonna nod your head, that send me pictures of people that have come in and used our dump signs.
Well, the way we had it written, they didn't have to throw it in there. They, it was a fine if they just attempted to, if it was because the sign says Polk County Residence Hall and attempting to, even attempting to dump garbage in. We had, I think it was like a five hundred dollar fine. If you even drove in there and attempted to dump your garbage, you got turned away there. It's five hundred dollar fine to pull it in there. But we need to see something, talk to the sheriff, talk to Steve Lawte, something to start enforcing this stuff. Cause, well, we see what our sanitation's costing, and, you know, and our geographical location is terrible. Uh, McMinn County, or Polk, uh, Lansdale, you can literally throw a rock to McMinn County. South Polk is three quarters a mile from Bratty County line. Benton decent, but still gets abused. And up here, we're not only getting it from other counties, we're getting it from two more states, you know. And I mean, it's gotta stop, and us and us, we're not the world's dumping ground. And, uh, we've got to lay the law down, long arms of law somehow on these people.
Have we, have we not ever put up signs that, uh, indicating that, that they'd be fined?
Sure, they're, they're ever done, ever done, God.
I've never noticed.
Yeah, no, usually it's facing, when you pull in, you'll look right at it, like on the middle dumpster. Benton, I'm not kicking my words out of South Polk. Uh, Mark was wanting to have a sanitation committee July second, if everybody could be there at it, uh, on some other stuff, and, uh, that'd be a good time to, if we get the sheriff to come. Mark Evans will handle it on September second, and, or, I'm sorry, July second. And that'd be a good time, either get sheriff there, or just do some research and see what the sheriff's resources are. And, you know, you used to have pictures of them before. I personally run people out of South Polk, Robbie's running people, I mean, it's, it, it ain't a rare occurrence. You can go any, any random dump in the county, on any random day of the week, at a random time of day, if you'll spend twenty minutes, somebody will attempt to abuse it. And any day of the week, any time of day, you spend twenty minutes, and somebody pull in on these sites that's not supposed to be there, and, uh, it's time to turn them back. We might look at something, give the county commissioners the rest of ours. I'm just kidding, but wait until we find out who can do it, though, and what, and start getting it done. So, that's all I had on that, when, uh, do you say, could you come on second duty?
I'll be competition with kids, anytime after the second.
Well, uh, I get, later, Robbie'll call Mark tomorrow and get back to, back, that's when Mark get done. And that's all I had on that. The next is a sanitation update, county executive.
As Greg said, Mark Evans is chairman of the sanitation committee, and he wanted to have that set up July second. Southeast Development District has already confirmed that they will be there if we can make July the second work. Uh, Mark and myself was in a meeting, um, with Southeastern Development District, TDEC, uh, I can't remember, there's two other entities that were there, and we've been working to try to get the RFP broken up in such a way that it's not monopolized like it is right now. And what I mean by that is, is the way that the RFP's written, it limits certain people to be able to do our sanitation. Some are haulers, they don't want to staff the sites. Some are, you know, that, that don't want to do that, that knocks them out of being able to even bid on our sanitation contract. So, this is what that Southeastern Development District's gonna help us to do. Rewrite this RFP in every way, shape, form, and fashion. Uh, I've been with two of the compact builders, so we bypassed the middleman. Took them around to each and every site, and as Greg said, that was kind of where I ran into a little issue over in Lansdale, I personally didn't know who I thought I was.
He just happened to be there at it.
Just pulled up.
Random time, middle of the week.
Yes, and, you know, because he was chunking probably fifteen bags of garbage with Monroe County tags, and when I asked to see his permit, his response was, is he shutting his hatch, "Who do you think you are?" So, I told him who I was, and I'd like to see him in my office within the next forty-eight hours. He came in and produced the correct information to get his permit, but this is something that happens a lot. Also, I have a resolution to go into the contract agreement between Sandtech and Advanced Disposal. Um, they came in the office today, or, we didn't get this in until this week, Eric got the resolution back to me. But also, they're willing to give us an extra thirty days, so it would extend this to the end of the year. It's not just to the first December, only quote-quote six months. So, both providers have agreed to that, if that would help us to do so. Um, like I said, and we, I've been out and looked at all the sites, taking different ones to different areas to, just to try to give an idea, and also to hear what they would recommend. Because the equipment that is set up now is not working to its full potential, and you all seen the tonnage. You've seen how that works. If a ten-ton box is only holding four tons, it's only working at forty percent. And so, it's, it's affecting us as a county, and so, that's part of this in this agreement, or, what we're gonna look into is for the county to be able to purchase its own equipment, uh, also for a service agreement. So, I encourage you and all the commissioners and the public to come, uh, to the July second meeting, if this is the date that it goes forward, because there's just a whole lot of different questions, and it can all be addressed there, but I'm gonna present the resolution, uh, from Commissioner Brooks, if you'd read that, that gives me the authority to sign the agreement between Sandtech and Advanced Disposal for our six, six-month contract. And so, once we do this, and then, just to let everybody know that if July the second will work, there'll be a lot of different ones in, in that meeting to come at seven o'clock.
Resolution six six nineteen. The resolution, number one, accepting the bid of Sandtech Waste Services LLC for operating four convenience centers located in West Polk and providing collection and disposal services. Number two, accepting the bid of Advanced Disposal Services Incorporated for operating the two convenience centers located in East Polk County and providing collection and disposal services. Number three, approving the hauling and disposal agreement for West Polk County, Tennessee between Polk County, Tennessee and Sandtech Waste Services LLC. Number four, approving the hauling disposal agreement for East Polk County, Tennessee between Polk County, Tennessee and Advanced Disposal Services Incorporated. Number five, authorizing the county executive to execute the hauling and disposal agreements on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee. Whereas in response to the request for bids submitted by Polk County, Tennessee, Sandtech Waste Services LLC submitted the following bid, continue to operate the four convenience centers located in West Polk County, Tennessee, and provide collection and disposal services to the county through December first, twenty nineteen. The rates are Benton Convenience Center, operation equipment costs three thousand a month. Haul rate, two nineteen fifty-six per haul. Disposal rate, eighteen dollars per ton. South Polk Center, operations equipment costs fifteen hundred per month. Haul rate, two oh five forty-two per haul, disposal rate, eighteen per ton. Lansdale Convenience Center, operations equipment costs nine seventy-five a month. Haul rate, two sixty-five oh six per haul, disposal rate, eighteen dollars a ton. Reliance Convenience Center, operations equipment costs fifteen hundred per month. Haul rate, two seventy-two seventy-one per haul, disposal rate, eighteen dollars per ton. Whereas no other bids were submitted to operate the four convenience centers located in West Polk County and provide collection and disposal services through December first, twenty nineteen. Whereas in response to requests for bids submitted by Polk County, Tennessee, Advanced Disposal Services Incorporated submitted the following bid, continue to operate the two convenience centers located in East Polk County and provide collection and disposal services to the county through December first, twenty nineteen. Gracie Creek Convenience Center, operations equipment costs three thousand six hundred nine per month. Haul rate, one eighty per haul, disposal rate, thirty-eight sixty-eight per ton. Warner Convenience Center, operations equipment costs two thousand one hundred seventy per month. Haul rate, three hundred fifty per haul, disposal rate, thirty-eight sixty-eight per ton. Whereas no other bids were submitted to operate the two convenience centers located in East Polk County and provide collection and disposal services through December first, twenty nineteen. Whereas no bids were submitted to operate all the convenience centers located in Polk County and provide collection and disposal services through December first, twenty nineteen. Whereas Polk County, Tennessee desires to accept the above bids and enter into new hauling and disposal agreements with Sandtech Waste Services LLC and Advanced Disposal Services Incorporated. Now therefore, be resolved, this laid body and session assembled, that number one, the bid of Sandtech Waste Services LLC to operate the four convenience centers located in West Polk County and provide collection and disposal services is accepted. Number two, the bid of Advanced Disposal Services Incorporated to operate the two convenience centers located in East Polk County and provide collection and disposal services is accepted. Number three, the hauling and disposal agreement between Polk County, Tennessee and Sandtech Waste Services LLC is approved. Number four, hauling and disposal agreement between Polk County, Tennessee and Advanced Disposal Services Incorporated is approved. And number five, the county executives authorized to execute the hauling and disposal agreements on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee. Bit further resolved, this resolution take effect from and after its passage of public welfare requirement at this twenty day of June twenty nineteen. As resolution six six nineteen.
Make a motion to accept resolution six six nineteen.
Second.
Got a motion by John Hoyt, second by David, in discussion.
Is part of that's authorizing the extra thirty days?
Yeah, correct, yes, that was one thing on there, like I said, they came in the office today and said December the first, it will be December the thirty first.
Other than that, what's the difference in what we've already voted on? We voted on a similar resolution last month.
It's just thirty days.
Just thirty-day extension.
Correct, this was that resolution, so I can agree, or so I can enter into this agreement.
Okay.
Is this a have to?
Pardon?
Is this a have to?
Yes, if this body does not resolve that, my signature's no, no good.
No.
He's saying if we approve this-
If we get everything ready by December first, do we have to do that?
This is the resolution, you all agree to-
No, what he's saying, if we go into business ourselves-
You didn't have a resolution before.
By December first, say we're up rocking, rolling ourselves-
Do we have to have a thirty-day option?
Do we got option to get out of this for that month?
This, no, there was never a resolution for me to sign this contract.
No, that ain't what I'm saying. I'm, I'm asking about the extension, the thirty days.
Thirty days.
Is that a have to?
This is just what they have offered to us.
But no, it's six months.
But, no, no, what I'm saying is, is there's never been a resolution for me to enter into this agreement. This is the first of this.
We understand that.
Correct, but you all have taken that thirty days, and like, this is the only resolution.
Yeah, but if-
This is resolution we had to pass.
Long story short, yeah, is this or nothing?
Yeah.
After what you're saying.
This is resolution we had to pass, but instead of, it's got thirty more days.
Does this force us to give them thirty more days?
Yes, we don't have a contract with them, that's what I'm saying.
I'm not saying that. If we approve this, does it go through December first or December thirty first by four?
It goes six months, the thirty first is what they're offering.
What we're setting up-
But you all know, but there's nothing there.
We set it up to the resolutions, one for six months and one for a thirty-day option.
I think that's, I think we've waited thirty days, and it's, it's just pushing the date, but it's still six months.
I say five cents, cause I'm gonna go out on a red.
It's still pushing it six months.
We're not gonna be up and running by December first, I think.
Then we won't be by January first, then we won't be by January first.
No, we, I agree with what you said, we need to incent him to get up and go, but realistically, if I had rolled the dice, main purpose, I'd take just thirty days.
So, equipment, I mean, it, to do the equipment, the equipment that we're gonna have to have built is sixty days out. So, they're nice enough to offer thirty more days, just like Greg says.
As long as it's an offer, not a have to.
We don't even have a contract right now, though. I've not signed anything with them. Until you give me the forty to sign a contract.
Looking at you having that contract signed, would that thirty days be, we would, would we, we, would we be obligated then for the thirty days?
No, they just-
If this passes, we got a contract then through the last day of the year.
Correct, right now, you don't have nothing. They can pull out tomorrow. They have waited another twenty days, because there's never been a resolution that I could sign this. So, it's still six months.
Who made that motion, John?
Second.
Second, by some matter.
The last two weeks have been free?
No, no, they're in charge, it's just they've been under due faith mistake.
Any more discussion? Rokeau.
Craig Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
DBS Canucks?
Pass.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pippenjer?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
And I got a deal.
And I have a- Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question about that? About the prices of the haul wheels? Why is it, why is it so much higher from the foreigner, uh, unit out there to, and then?
They're saying they had to go around the back weight or something, cause some bridge-
They're coming through North Carolina down two ninety-four.
That's what they're telling us, they have to, cause some bridge, you believe, ain't they?
They dropped the weight limit on the bridge out here in Texas, damn. Stayed there. So, they say they're over the weight limit, they're having to go two ninety-four, and like, or six.
Well, I live on sixty-eight, and every night, especially Thursday, these motor tractor trailers comes through, and, and, and if they're, if they, there's a weight limit on it, they need to stop them dudes from coming on through. Cause they're coming fully loaded. I mean, they're loaded with the, what, forty thousand pounds on there, or more? And, and if the weight limit's under that, somebody else needs to stop doing it. Or, let these haulers come across.
It's like the county money, more than two.
Yeah. I mean, these tractor trailers, I'll bet you these two hundred a day comes through there. Just because it's about thirty-five miles quicker for those drivers to come through sixty-eight and across the mountain than it is to go down seventy-five. They're cutting off about thirty-five miles on their trip, or maybe even more than that.
I say what this bunch up here doing, yes, they are going a longer way around, but they gouged us on their price, and they're making even greater profit per mile.
Well, it's about a hundred and fifty dollars more per trip, isn't it?
And they don't care to earn it all, cause they're probably making, they're not breaking evens, or making the same-
They don't take that many gallons of fuel to do that.
I guarantee you their profit margin is up, going a long way around, percentage-wise, and going the short way. I mean, they've agreed to do this, but if we look at their profit margins, going a long way around, it's a lot higher than going the old way, they're making more money.
So, I'm saying, if one can do it and cross that little concrete bridge, and it ain't four foot, it busts down to the water. But, uh-
It ain't gonna hurt them.
It won't hurt them if it came through, they drilled holes in that thing, and everything else all that, hooked off across that. And it ain't really nothing but concrete covered, and, you know, it's got rales up. But, I can't see the difference, I mean.
Maybe, what do we, do you need to check in that, talk to somebody, or, you know, who to talk to about that? That's a truck school in Rink.
They're supposed to be rebuilding that, and they just appear wrong.
Yeah, but this don't cost Polk County a, oh, fortune to, to keep hopping it like that.
They took one of their way because of the weight limit, they took three more out for a foreigner way, so they did remove dumpsters for people's homes.
Those, more bridges at Farner Way?
No, they removed personal dumpsters for their homes, they removed all of them.
But you gotta pay them to come home.
I was paying them a C P for a personal dumpster, and they called Black and March, and they removed mine and three other people's, you know, because of their fridge.
Uh, I've got a last thing on the agenda, the denim, I got mixed up. It gets mixed up on my days, I found out about this one day after the deadline, and I could not let go for another- Uh, I've got a last thing on the agenda, the denim, I got mixed up, it gets mixed up on my days, I found out about this one day after the deadline, and I could not let go for another month, so we got in a denim. I've got a resolution concerning TWRA and their latest fee increases, and goes in fact July first, boat registration fees are going up. And my problem with this is, everybody comes these meetings, budget meetings, they say what we gotta work with, and us and other ninety-five counties, other ninety-four counties across state Tennessee. You know, our job is balance budget, we're held accountable by voters of this county every four years for our action, that, I mean, that makes us, I think, very responsible among. TWRA is not governed by the state, they're governed by ten, try to say it's nine. They're ten out of touch with the average person, probably big political donors, there's ten commissioners, and I might be wrong, but all the years I've kept foot with them. John and me, John Holt, John Quall's been meeting, I don't think I've ever seen it sending votes for nothing, if the state director asks for it, it's ten to nothing, ten to nothing, ten to nothing. They just raised hunting licenses couple years ago, and now, you know, we can't tax our way out of bad situation, cause we're, we're held accountable every four years. Well, these people here accountable, nobody, and like I said, hunting, fishing license went up, and every time they find themselves in a bind, they just wanna tax their way out. And, you know, we get, this county could benefit so much from a wheel tax, but we don't do it because the citizens don't want it. All this is, is a wheel tax on a boat, on a boat, a vessel, and it took ten of them that none of us ever made, they probably wouldn't even talk to us, because they know something more than ten. Well, they needed more money, so those ten rubber stands are good to prove it. And what I'm asking is, you know, we got a fresh start with a new governor, he seems to, you know, really watch the money from what I've seen so far. And I'd like to ask him to reevaluate how those ten commissioners are picked, and also have somebody besides them to oversee their own budget. So, that's what my resolution, it's just getting more out of hand every year, and all improvements I've seen, and I think everybody here agree with me, is TWRA is driving near nice of reg.
Amen.
That's all improvement I've seen from these increases, so.
Greg, is it ten or thirteen members?
I, I think it's ten, it might be thirteen.
I, I believe it's thirteen.
But, they're going up.
You told me the other day.
Going up regularly, and they had, I'll give you examples of what we're dealing with at TWRA. Last time I talked to one about raising fishing license, told him I was opposed to it, it was Mr. Watson, I think he owns Watson Car Leadership, it's Watson family car, I believe it's him. And he asked me where I live, and this is how I'd touch you, and I said Spokane, he said, Mr. Brooks, and you of all people should see the success in your county. He said, the last two spotted bass, state record spotted bass have been caught out of parts of lake, and he said, you of all people, just see where our money's going. Well, he didn't know it, but then the fishing guy, they have four thousand dollar reward out on whoever started them in the lake to start with, TWRA did. So, settling in basic fee, I swear it's true, I mean, they're just so, they're terrible, terrible, out of touch, and I think they need to be more accountability before they can just say, yes, let's go up on this, yes, let's go up on that. It ain't that easy for us, it ain't that easy for the ninety-four counties, state Tennessee.
Brooks, couple year ago, if I'm not badly mistaken, we were at a meeting where they wanted to eradicate feral hawk.
Yeah, and then they banned hunting.
Turned around and put restrictions on hunting.
You remember that, John? They said they were going to eradicate every wild hawk in the state of Tennessee, and they said thirty votes, ten or thirteen to nothing, to ban hunting. I don't know what they want from, whatever's coming at.
They put helicopters up in there to shoot them, if you remember.
But they missed them all, and more hogs down the state. That's who, that's who we're dealing with, and after ten or thirteen people tell us they want more money. They're gonna walk for fuel in them just to kill wild hawks. But they did in the same meeting, declared emergency, state of emergency, they want to eradicate every wild hawk in state Tennessee, and in the same meeting, they banned about ten types of hunting.
On the hawk?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know, anyway, the resolution is, and I promise everybody it's the last resolution, that. It's six seven nineteen, resolution of governing body of Spokane, Tennessee. Whereas the governing body of Spokane, Tennessee is aware of the voter registration increase that's set forth by Tennessee Wildlife Resource Agency beginning July first, twenty nineteen. And whereas the legislative body of Spokane is aware of general government budgeting practices, and are not satisfied with the way the increase was implemented in relation to cutting other expenditure years, balancing budget of TWRA. And whereas it is believed that TWRA has been given too much unsupervised power in making its own revenue lines, which are completely separate from Tennessee state budget process. And at too many times, like today, June the twentieth, twenty nineteen, information on cost and expenditure years are not available for review. I think their computers are damn dated, they're always damn, is that right, John Holt?
Yeah, I think the, this next four oh four page not found.
Right, whereas it, it does say thirteen, the thirteen member TWRA board is appointed, nine members from the governor, and four members from the state's general assembly, house and senate. Instead of being elected by the people, there should be the greatest oversight on their budget. Now therefore be it resolved by the Spokane commission meeting in regular session, it's twentieth day of June, twenty nineteen, that request is being made for the governor of the great state of Tennessee to suspend the increase introduced by TWRA until such time the organization's budget can be reviewed, and a cut made to the increase on voter registrations can be made and/or system be put in allowing the voters of this great state to write to appointments by a simple majority. Such board have may be allowed through general voting practice of state Tennessee, this resolution shall become effective on passage of public welfare requirement.
Motion to approve six seven nineteen? Second.
Got a motion by John, second by Jeremy, any more discussion?
Now, Brooks, that means we want them to stop the increase or get rid of, let us vote the board, right?
And just have the governor to, somebody to start over, because obviously something wrong with their budget, I mean, when you gouge them people every year, and if you're taxing, spending, taxing, spending, you know, it ain't working. And I'd like to request governor Lee to look into that, and I would like him to look at the process that they use to make those appointments. They all just saying here, I think, eight of them by the governor and five of them by state legislature, so they give them, how they get those spots, but I'd like to see them elected or some other way, because it ain't working now. They, what, John, one of them been hunting, we talked to that time, he was on some kind of African safari or something, he said.
He was on a guided, he was on a guided hunt.
Do what?
He was on a guided hunt.
Yeah, he was on a guided hunt in Africa or something, not one we talked to, been hunting, now thirteen of them, so.
What are you doing with the money and the radar?
I got a motion by John, second by Jeremy.
Throw one more thing in there, Brooks, I believe, where they had this meeting and voted in that, that increase?
Right.
Was that duck unlimited headquarters, it meant.
And that's another problem, I'll say this now, historical in Tennessee, I mean, a lot of people duck hunting, but historically, duck hunters are the wealthy, doctor, lawyer type of people. And what money, money does get spent from TWRA, it's not in East Tennessee, it goes west Tennessee, Mississippi Flyaway, where all the duck hunting is, that's where all of our hunting fees and our increases go to the bulk of it. And that's another thing I'd like to address at a later meeting, but. You know, we voted once on whatever happened, it was unanimous to ask the governor to remove them from Spokane, but they never did, did they, John Holt?
No, they still here, Brooks, they still got your picture on there.
Can't take it off that page. Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
David Douglas?
Yes.
Do you ask not?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Kippenberg?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
I'm just a board, just a second. I just wanna apologize for my late interference, I've got some bad information, I was told that the council tonight's meeting, I had worked over all day and was just staying in Benton because, again, I helped me at East Benton, so I just kinda went to sleep about Miss Lushy and gas, and then and I text Daniel's wife, and she thought the meeting was canceled, because Daniel had to stay home with the kids, and so I had my home, she texted and said, oh no, the meeting is real, and I thought, I was just coming up here, and I just thought I'd run by to see if the meeting was resumed, of course they were done. But I'm just wanna beg y'all's forgiveness, because I really desperately need y'all just to look over, can you suspend the rules and just look over one amendment for me? It's a food service amendment and just a little amendment for the board. I really hate to ask you that, you've had a long day, and I know that it's very unorthodox to do this, but I just really got some bad information, and, because I was gonna be early and I was gonna have it all sitting there for you. But if you pan, I would really appreciate it, I know that it's really not.
If it's, I didn't see where it said schools, but schools are covered, but.
Well, there was.
We can do it without spending rules, cause it was on the agenda.
There was school amendments in.
Right, so budget amendment's on the agenda, so we don't have to spend rules, we can do it.
Okay, I'll just give you, you can just look over them, they're not real in depth or anything, and.
How many you got?
Well, this one, it's just, this one actually was approved last month, but there was just a line items, and I got wrote up last year because I didn't have the right expenditure code, and I just marked it out, and I just wanted y'all to be aware of that. But this one is the food service, but, um, right there is a food service, and these are flow-through money, it says all flow-through. And then this is just, it looks like a lot, but really and truly, it's just a few of odds and ends, so. If y'all wanna scream at me, I will take it, and I really apologize, and I hate it, you can scream at me, but if you want to, I really will take it.
Are there any of these, so you're asking for one-on-one money?
No, I'm not asking for any money.
It's all in terms of blow through.
Yeah, it's, the second page is all flow-through money, it's all in one forty-one, and the very last page is a one forty-three, it's just between line items. There's no one-on-one money coming or going.
Are you saying that there were some line item numbers incorrect with the dollar?
That's on the very first, when y'all approved it last month, you can see where I marked amount. I just had the wrong expenditure line item.
So what?
All the money stays the same, I just needed to mark these numbers out, which were five twenty-four and put, five twenty-four where four ninety-nine was, and five twenty-four were two oh one, I put the wrong expenditure code on this one.
So you can put it in here with the right hand side.
And then this one is your real, that was last month's approval, and then this one is all flow-through money, grants. That's a food service.
Y'all, let's see, is this a food service altogether, or is there?
No, that's just food service up there, all that's grant money.
Okay, so you got food service, and then this is your, what's, what's this?
That was the one that you approved last month, and the only one that's changed is this, this little number here.
So what's your budget amendment number on this one?
Uh, this was budget amendment four.
Okay.
Did six tonight during your regular meeting. This one is amendment seven.
Now, y'all's food service is under a different.
Yeah, I haven't done, this is general purpose seven, this is eight, and food service is two.
Okay, so you got seven and eight on the general?
Yeah, seven and eight in general, and number two on food service.
Two on food service. Now, you need us to readdress four?
Um, four, yeah, just to readdress four, it is just these, uh, four.
General.
Yeah, just these four line items.
Right, it is under general.
Yes.
And that was done last month?
Yeah, it's in May, and I was just entering it today, and when I got to these, it was saying the line items weren't correct.
Mr. Chairman, are you entertaining the motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a motion that we edit, remove, and reintroduce general amendment four from the May meeting, this will replace number four from the May meeting. And approve seven and eight under school board general, and number two under food service school board. So you're taking four and replacing it with a new one that she's entered the correct numbers into, the amount doesn't change, so those four away from last month, put this one in, and then we're accepting seven and eight under their general and two under food service.
One second. Got a motion from John, second by you, any more discussion? That roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
David Douglas?
Yes.
Do you ask not?
Yes.
John Kippenberg?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have had just some questions, have we, by the way, I shouldn't have done it off to the chairman, county executive, have we had any, have we been done cocaine leases lately?
Yes, I got those locked in, they're about a dollar, or at a dollar and fifty from last year's one to seven, so it's twenty cents a gallon cheaper.
Twenty cent cheaper this year.
This year.
You check on the natural gas?
Natural gas is not available in a lot of our areas.
Come down four eleven.
It come down four eleven.
Just broke the gas line going across town.
Courthouses on natural gas, there's not.
How come if the courthouse on natural gas is because we have any heaters farm, well, we got them propane tanks sitting in the hall every year.
As when the boiler went down?
The boiler has problems every year.
Yeah.
There's fourteen thousand dollars worth of boiler power, makes sense.
But, and it gets lit off of natural gas, right? Why can't we have a little individual heaters too, that runs off of natural gas, I mean, for some of the offices that are a lot colder than others.
And they're running lines through the.
And I had a, that was another question that was brought up, and I've had heating, and I've contacted the department trying to put central heating area units in the courthouse.
Well, that's one thing, you know, we missed a grant last year that probably would, we would have qualified for that, so I'm praying that something like that comes back into the picture. It was all about county buildings, uh, we, just every, I mean, it, it covers so many things, so many auctions. So it'd be nice if maybe something falls out of the sky with that.
You know, and you also got, look, that's the east and the west side that's serviced, you've got libraries, you've got community center, you've got.
What, what company did you go with this?
Suburban, that's who we've had, and I mean, a little FYI.
But I mean, natural gas is so much cheaper than propane, isn't it?
Correct, where it's.
I mean, so what, you know, I mean, I understand about the mines, and I mean, I know right now, we're, we're, we don't have money, I mean, I'm not arguing the fact, I'm just saying that it would probably almost pay for itself with the savings versus them propane tanks.
But now we're, is, the courthouse is on natural gas, right?
Correct, when the boiler is.
Yeah.
It wasn't last time.
The boiler is, what? Boiler has four broke plates.
Yeah.
It broke two when it first fired up, broke two more later on.
But even when it's working at its full capacity, don't you still have cold sparks?
No, it's hot.
It'll run you out of there.
Yeah, it'll run you out of there, but.
Well, we need to have a building committee meet too, look at the health department, they're having sewage issues, building committee, ASAP, we can everybody build one.
Wouldn't, didn't have a grant, they don't take care of that with?
That's improvements on the overall health department.
That'd be unimproved.
It couldn't, yeah, it'd been improving over how it is now, if you fix it, that's for sure. I bet they're gonna spend a hundred and forty thousand on their improvements, but I don't reckon they're falling.
It's, you know, and I've, I've just had different ones that's came out and looked, and, you know, once they've done a unstop, and asked them, what do you think it's gonna cost? So far, the cheapest one's been about forty thousand dollars.
On what now?
Replumbing the health department.
I tell what we'll do, we'll set it for Tuesday before the budget meeting. We might not have to have a budget meeting Tuesday if we get everything cut Monday, but.
Oh, Lord, we gotta do.
If we do, we have one Tuesday, we'll have a building committee meeting at six before the budget meeting. Not do what? Can you be there?
No, not Tuesday.
You gonna miss all that cut?
We don't cut Monday, I'm missing.
Oh, you'll bear Monday.
I'll be there Monday.
You'll be more motivated. And we'll have Tuesday at six, if we have a budget meeting. And if the budget meeting's not necessary, we'll have Tuesday at seven, building committee meeting.
Here?
Yeah.
Quick question. Uh, I'd like to, if, uh, you tell me where to, before we stand with the bids and all on the, for the lights over here to all people.
You have a question?
I might cheer everybody. He's asked much light.
That was something, that was something that was looked into and it's going to be up to somebody besides the county because it's an estimated cost of what I brought back before in ninety. Because, um, what's the power company up on this end?
Tri-State.
Tri-State said that they would not.
Nobody said they would. Nobody said they would.
But Tri-State will not come in and do anything. It's going to be up to a contractor.
That's not what I said in that meeting. I said some of the men would donate their time on the evenings, some evenings, whatever it was, when they was able to do it and on the weekend that they would do their time free. I didn't say Tri-State. They work for Tri-State. But they wasn't, they, I didn't ask the Tri-State would they install them. You did. You went, did you not go to Tri-State and ask Mr. Chastain?
I had Tri-State to bring the plans that they had out here that were drawn up years ago.
That's not what I'm asking. Did you go talk to Mr. Chastain about them installing?
I asked him for their plans.
They didn't have a plan. I asked you, did you go to them and ask him if they was gonna install them?
I asked him for their plans.
You're, you're evade the question.
Such as?
Such as, I asked you, did you go and talk with Mr. Chastain at Tri-State EMC?
I contacted.
About installing lights.
I contacted Tri-State and they sent a crew out.
Did you go to Tri-State and talk to Mr. Chastain?
So I did not go to Tri-State.
Okay, you called him and you tell him that I said that they would install them.
No, I contacted and.
That's not what your paper said, is it, Mr., uh?
That they.
Glenn Harson.
They brought me the plans and I looked at them and they told me, they said, Robert.
You already had the plans in your office. TVA had already approved. You did not let and do what the commission told you to do and put bids out. They told you to put it up for bid. So did it, I don't know if it's unanimous or not, but I know it was close. Told you send out bids. Did you send out the first bid?
No.
No, because you didn't want to.
No, that's, no, it was the.
Why did you not send out bids?
Because estimated cost was ninety thousand.
That, that ain't what, y'all, you get bids for the estimated cost. You don't go ask somebody from Tri-State EMC. You don't call them and ask them about bids. He told you he could get one, didn't he? According to the newspaper.
They put me in contact with the people.
Hmm, did you call them?
I contacted some of the lighting people because you have to have shatterproof lights. That's what's.
The specs was already there.
There's new specs.
Nobody, you, you wasn't told to get new specs. TVA had to approve that. You didn't go to TVA. No.
Because it comes back.
You done what you wanted to do. You got them, you get, you're gonna push it under the dud like it's been done for seventeen years. And the poles is laid over there until they're not inspect now.
Because they're.
Supposed to, but the state's got different rigs on ninety foot poles.
Let me get this Jim right here, please. He's been facing.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, well, I don't know if I talked to him or I talked to road park or whatever. But, uh, I've got problems up that road mine. Okay, it's washing my driveway out, it's washing my yard out. It's got ditches in there deep enough that my grandkids fall in.
What, what road you live on?
Oh, I live on Wolf Drive. On Wolf Drive. Okay, all that water didn't run into my spring, into my drinking water. Okay, I called the road park back a couple of years ago. And I can tell you exactly who I talked to in Jim's house. And I'm telling him about, uh, about cleaning all that up and everything. And his exact words that he told me was not his problem. Okay.
Well, last.
My grandkids can't get out in the yard and clean without falling in that ditch.
Are you gonna fall in that ditch?
Okay, I made nurse rake it up through there. It washed right back in.
So now the road's washed out now?
The ditch, yeah, I've got a ditch. Now this road that deep, my truck burying.
Well, come on, let us get your contact information. And last time this happened, we had a road committee. We come out and looked at it. So I guess what they do here is that everybody thinks on road committee.
Well, they come up to the, last week, something like that, putting tar and that grabs up the.
Well, he called.
Well, the hall. They got my driveway, they still ditched when I went down that.
Have you looked at it, Roy Jean?
No, of course, I've heard it. Do you, you have the log trucks? Do you live right near the log truck?
No. I live on Wolf Drive.
The end of Wolf Drive.
I'm going at, where, uh, there's right there at, uh, Mount Vista.
Hardy Burner used to.
Hardy Burner.
Yeah, I don't know, man, pace my beard. Right that way.
It's through road, Wolf Road's through road. It goes over to Mount Vista.
From Mount Vista over to, uh, sixty-eight, sixty-four, sixty-eight on that. Or, uh, how many factors?
Turn on Mount Beast, or off of Mount Beast on Wolf. It's the first one on the left.
Yeah, I'm the first one on the left there.
Off of sixty-eight or off of?
No, off of Mount Beast.
Uh, Mount Vista.
Be the first one on the left. Right there where the log trucks and stuff, they log in the road there.
No, there's no log trucks there.
They're not there. No, you're talking, you're, uh, you're talking about muddy water. You got a log truck apart.
They put, uh, they put a bit higher there, the end of the driveway. Kind of keep.
The ditches up through there is higher than the road. Okay, all the water comes down through there. But when it gets to my driveway, it just goes down my driveway. Okay, I've got a ditch in my yard that, well, I've had a couple of grandkids fall in, luckily they weren't hurt. But that's not to say that they ain't gonna get hurt.
So what do you feel like the problem is?
The ditch ain't cleaned out.
Okay, you think it's.
The road flushed away.
Yeah, the road washed away. I had to boil tile out, try to divert the water from that way. Cause the tiles is the bull that work the corners.
Okay, so you feel like it's, it's a ditch issue completely? Okay.
Yeah, the ditches up through there, I know it's not been cleaned out in the last three to five years.
Are you familiar with any of that issue?
The ditches been cleaned out like that?
Are you familiar with any of that issue that he's talking about?
I do clean ditches up there. I mean, he's telling the truth on that. But I didn't know that there was a, no, he's not calling about this problem.
No, I, I called, I called, no, I didn't get to talk to you. I talked, like I said, I talked to Jim's house.
Right, but you did not call him.
Well, I did, I didn't, oh, I know that I talked to somebody that, I thought.
He's over there at the time.
I talked to him there saying that he told me his exact word was that that wasn't his problem.
They, you know, they was asking me about the log trucks because I've been there and they had, you know, they've logged in and out with the ditches up there and it's hard to keep those ditches clean.
I don't worry.
All, all we're asking is the road be peaks.
All I'm, all I'm.
That's my drinking water. I don't need to damn near.
Right. Well, I mean, you know, he's not been aware of it, so let's give him the chance to, for him to check it out. Like you say, you did get to talk to him personally going through the grapevine. I mean, you know, which it should work lots of times, but it don't. So, you know, let's give Roy Jean a chance to come out, see what the issue is. See if anything is adding to the ditch issue that's causing your issue, you know, so, uh.
Well, I know all the way up through there, the ditches are higher than the road.
Well.
I, I put two colors in. They're full because all the money thing, it can wash out.
Yeah, which, you know, sometimes, and I, I, you know, I, I don't even hear them be talking because I mean, you know, I, but I know sometimes they can be three and four issues causing an issue, you know? And not taking away from y'all's issue, but, you know, the road could be dealing with more issues than, you know.
You brought it up. Okay, from what I was told, wherever they does some road work up there, back years ago. Okay, up, up there were, uh, you come in from, uh, Mount Vista side to the other side and you get up there to talk, you got the tanks are driving, you go down to the left. Okay, from what I was told, that power was supposed to be diverted to go off Wolf, I mean, off Wolf Drive.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't. It all comes off down to me.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying.
I mean, it, it didn't let it river down.
Yeah. You know, it could be a larger issue up the road even or whatever, you know? But, I mean, are you willing, uh, Roy Jean to go out and, I mean, look and see what his issue is without it having to be turned into the, us doing it with the road committee or whatever? I mean, uh.
If you'll let me look at it first and you want, you want to address it if you need to.
I mean, is that okay, Greg?
If Roy Jean, if him agree to time to come out there this week or something, or, well, day's Thursday. Or maybe one day next week. That I.
Long next week.
It is, uh, just to get this clear, in your chain of command, is your, is your foreman, is he authorized to tell, to make that decision without telling you?
I have, I have work orders in place if a person calls and has a issue or complaint. We'll take it on the work order. We keep a record of those on the computer and we will go evaluate what needs to be done. And it may not be on the, the timeline of the person calling, but we do try to address all work orders that we receive, even down to, you know, the signs leaning or whatever.
Well, what I'm saying, I feel like if he'd have talked to you, you'd probably at least went and looked at it. If you'd have known about it. But I'm saying, is your foreman authorized to, like, tell him that that's none of the road department's concern? Isn't that just to be the end of?
Look what he was looking at. I don't know if he, you know, went out there and looked at it.
He didn't come out there. I talked to him on the phone.
That's why I say he told him on the phone, wasn't nothing to the road department.
I said they looked at his problem. He told me that looked at his problem.
Yeah, wasn't his problem, yeah. But his foreman's authorized to do that. They should report it on you anyway, shouldn't they?
At least they have the schedule for me and whatever they want to do.
If you will look at that, I'll ship these.
I have a comment on that. If they come out and patched, uh, little, uh, holes, I guess you call it, road. Okay, and if they're patching and they say hack the road washed away, why didn't they go back and report it to him?
Yeah, that's what I, I just wondered, yeah, but.
Well, that's what can happen lots of times through, you know, the chain of command. And, I mean, you know, lots of times then the commander gets left out during the chain of command.
Yeah.
And, you know, so, you know, but before we start the blaming committee, let's, you know, let's give Roy Jean a chance to see what's going on, see if he can address your problem. And work, everybody work through it peacefully.
That's what I'm saying. I think if he didn't knew about it, you just told something besides it wasn't their problem, but it never got to him.
We've had so much rain this past year that people, and I'm not saying, I don't even know how long your problem's been going on. Sounds like maybe a good while, but, I mean, all that rain we had just exploded everything. And ditches was coming. I've got a ditch through my field that's over ten foot deep that has never been there. And it come from the road water somewhere, somewhere and went into the river. I mean, it's, it's unbelievable this year, all the stuff that hacked during all the rain. But still, but like I say, you know, I would, you know, Roy Jean said it may even run out by midnight, but let's see.
All I need is the ditch cleaned out, where the water run down the ditch, to come down to my yard. That way I can look, fill that ditch in my yard back up again.
Right, yeah.
And my kids.
It sounds like something that shouldn't be equated with the two of us.
Thank you.
Yeah.
There was, that was about fifteen minutes ago.
Oh, we didn't.
Mr. Chairman, I'll leave my discussion until next meeting. If I be allowed to come before the, um, next meeting. Thank you.
You're welcome. Why don't we get something marked down there? Wake and mark, get something marked down on that.